I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Casper?
Here.
Mr. Level?
Here.
Mr. Parnell?
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Here.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Can we amend the agenda? Can we put back in the section that used to be called new business? Which normally went ahead of, after board reports, we had a new business thing.
All right, we can add a section for new business prior to board reports? After public comment?
After the first public comment, is that?
Uh huh, before board reports.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing nudge, Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes. For my comments, thank you for joining us tonight. Typically, we have our meetings the second and fourth Monday, but then we often, at year end, have, call it extra meeting, so that we can close the books as close to the end of the month as possible. So this year, when we set our agenda, we just, or set our meeting dates, we just decided to forego that second meeting of the month and set our meeting for Thursday night. So if you're wondering why our meeting was tonight, that's why, to make it more efficient. Rather than having three meetings in the month of June, this allowed us to have two. So thank you for joining us on a Thursday night, rather than our typical Monday evening. So with that, I will pass our comments to Matt?
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. The only thing I have tonight is, we lost two of our staff members, almost back-to-back within the last week. The first gentleman that we lost is Mike Robinson, who's a custodian here at Plains, who often would be here before our board meetings and after our board meetings. And the second was Dean Carew, who's a district maintenance helper and hauler. So I'd like to take a moment of silence for both gentlemen tonight. Thank you.
Jenny?
So, first of all, thank you for, like you said, modifying our schedules so that we could get as close to the end of the fiscal year as possible, so we had pretty accurate data for you. Under my comments, I wanted to kind of just review where we finished up this year, as compared to where we thought we would finish up. I've got several things that I'm asking for your approval on, under my section of the agenda, but I also put together just a snapshot of what we predicted in May at our forecast period, as well as October, and where we finished up. So, and I'm just going to highlight the big areas. So revenues overall, we are 0.2 percent away from where we thought we would be in May, and 0.8 percent from where we thought back in October. The good part about that is that we received more than we thought, so that's always better than receiving less than you predicted.
True.
So that's, that's good news. And as far as expenditures, we didn't really change our assumptions in May much from what we predicted in October. So for both periods, 0.5 percent off of where we predicted we would be for expenditures. Again, our expenditures are under what we predicted, so when you take both of those variances, that means that the cash balance at the end of the year is better than we predicted by 1.2 percent more, $1.3 million more. So at the end of the fiscal year, our general fund balance, we are ending the year with over $108 million, which for us is 230 days of cash, which is over seven and a half months of cash at the end of the fiscal year. So, that's just a highlighted summary. Not sure if you had any questions, but I just wanted to kind of give you the hot-off-the-press information.
That's pretty impressive that you almost hit it head-on in both areas. I mean, that's really hard to do.
We really do try to get as close as we can with the, with the forecast, but...
You're not a percent, I mean, wow.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close.
That is really good.
Very close, so.
All right, any other comments for us? Anything else that you want to review? Will you review your other pieces when we get to the treasurer's recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions for Jenny at this time? This brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll go to board reports, board policy, Matt?
What about new business?
Oh, I'm sorry, new business. We, we modified our agenda, Linda, so we're adding an opportunity for new business?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm one of the six people that actually watch board meetings, the video probably, but I notice that we never have a section where we bring up anything other than what's on the agenda. And there's been a few things this year, for example, opportunities for board members to have input into community conversation arrangements. It seems like there's two of us that are doing that with no other board input, and it kind of caters to special interests. And I still think there's some discord on this board, which is evident in the community, because I've been told so, by community members, and it's something we need to work on. A lot of people have the, the theory that majority of the board is trying to diminish the conservative view in every aspect. And it's something that we need to, I think we need to address. So, I think the new business section of the agenda should be added like it was before on every meeting.
All right. Would you put that under board reports where it was before?
I don't remember where it was before, but...
I think that's where it was.
Okay.
Have we had that on there since I've been on the board? I'm fine with it.
I don't know.
I don't know when it came off.
No.
Okay. I didn't know if it had been taken off or disappeared, or the reason why it left.
And it was always on there before.
It had to be before me, because I don't remember it.
That's, I was going to say, it's, it's been a few years.
So it's been two.
It's been a while, and I don't remember, I don't remember the history around it. I don't, I don't know.
I don't remember the reason it was taken off?
Well, I think it would make these meetings more effective and...
I would agree, I think that's fine.
It's a good idea to put it back on.
Yeah.
And again, the, I think that we've gotten that lob a few times on the community conversations, and I think we've often asked for feedback and input on the community conversations, and we would welcome any feedback and input to that committee and continue to do so. And if there's any feedback, we, we would like to hear that. You're always welcome to send in any feedback to that committee, and we'd like to hear what you have to say, and what topics you'd like to give us for that, that group. So, just like all the committees, you know, you're welcome to provide input to any of those committees at any time. So please let us know if there's specific topics that you'd like to, like to hear on that, in those discussions, and we will certainly entertain those in those committee meetings. So, perhaps we can do an update, excuse me, on what the plans are for next year at one of our upcoming meetings? We have not planned that next year yet, we'll do that in August, so yes, before that meeting then, too. Any input, any topics that you would like, I'll send out an email, or Julie will send out an email, if there's any topics you're interested in.
Does the, the board committee choose the topics, or does that come from Randy and Jeff?
It's a combination, most, it's not really, doesn't really come from Randy and Jeff, other than what Randy has heard. It's a input from Matt and Betsy, and the two people on the committee, and Randy and Jeff.
And what they've heard, and that they're getting feedback from, and what's been requested.
Right, what they've heard, yeah.
At this point, the only one that we've heard is that they have, they sent a note today asking for a follow-up to the chamber meeting that was done, and so they talked about doing a follow-up to the recent chamber event, and asked if we could do a second one as a follow-up to the chamber. So that is the only one that we've heard, that there's been any...
It's on the, another business plus students. Yes, business plus, I guess they asked for another one, and when they did the debrief, which, interestingly enough, we were not part of, when they did the debrief for that, Joe asked for another community conversation, and they picked a date and sent the date to us today. I think it's October something, October 1st, I believe. Yeah, so that's the only...
That just makes sense with all the stuff that we're doing with chamber now.
Right. Agree, yeah. Well, they wanted to be able to have more, more students there, and since this one was in the summer, they thought having one during the school year would be...
So are there any objections from the board on doing another one with the chamber that we should tell them that that's not something that we want to move forward with?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think so, too.
I agree.
So...
All right. All right. I think, again, we work on the, at the agenda meetings, we can certainly work on making sure things are added to the agenda, too. If anyone has anything that they would like to have added to the agenda, we can certainly do that at the agenda meetings.
Yeah, and that's, that was another thing I forgot to, to mention, is, we have agenda meetings usually on a Thursday, and we agree on an agenda, and then I get here Monday night, and there's been things added or changed that I didn't know about, and that's happened several times as well. So we need to have a protocol established, that the agenda set on Thursday is the agenda.
Sometimes we do have to add, like, personnel items before, like hires and things like that through HR, yeah.
Personnel items, that's different, okay.
There could be communication to the, all the boards, so everyone knows that, if there are any changes. All right, all right. Anything else? We'll move to board policy committee.
Thanks. I'm not Mr. Vogelmann, but I'll do my best impression of him this evening. Board policy meeting took place on June the 7th. There are first read policy and a couple, six policies that have some changes to them that I'll highlight now. One of those is 2340, field and other district sponsored trips, based on information we received back from legal and from our insurance company. We're going to remove the term "out of state" just because of where we're located, with so many different trips occurring across state lines. That was one change. Another change is in policy 2413 for career advising. This is just a Neola revision, has to be approved every two years, so this is just that end of the two-year cycle. Policy 4323 is about vacation, this is one of our changes, just to align with the language that we have. The content is updated based on accrual vacation days, and the cap number that can be accrued. Policy 5113 on inter-district open enrollment, again, one of our changes, clarification on cap numbers, including but not limited to, clarifies that just because you may be inside the district overall cap does not mean you get your request at school. So this clarification also depends on class sizes that they're requesting, so it's not an automatic. Policy 6550, travel and payment and reimbursement, again, one of Lakota changes. This is a language cleanup to align with our administrative guidelines that we put into place last August. The last one that I have is 8330 for student records. Again, a Lakota change, not a Neola change, just correct information on what is directory information. Currently, we don't have parent name, as part of that information we should. So again, it's another cleanup item. Brad, Todd, am I missing anything?
It's perfect.
Okay.
At least from my perspective.
Good.
I'll speak for you, Todd.
That's all I had on.
Vogelmann's got nothing on you.
I'll tell him you said that.
All right, any other discussion on policy? Butler Tech?
These are copies of the student success report of note. Butler Tech was named as one of the top workplaces in Cincinnati by the Cincinnati Inquirer, only one of 125 employers in the area who earned that top workplace recognition, and it's based solely on employee feedback, so that was nice to see. I do want to note, I had told you previously that the all-boards meeting was going to be October 10th, that date has been changed to October 17th. It'll be a little bit of a different setup, so different than what we've been expecting. It'll be part of a broader project that's going to happen that night, should be a really interesting night, so October 17th instead of October 10th. And finally, the only other piece to share with you is that I'll be traveling this week with one of our student CTSOs, that's the FCC LA team. We have several of the state officers are actually Lakota students, and they will be changing out at the national convention and competition, and I'll have the opportunity to judge some competition, so I'll let you know about that.
Where's that?
Anaheim.
Ooh.
So...
Will there still be food at the all-boards meeting that the children cook?
There will still be food, of some sort. That's all I have.
This is a great document.
Is this that monthly thing, Linda?
Yes, it is. I love this.
All right, legislative committee?
I'm going to give...
Before Matt and Jenny start, I would just like to say, I know Jenny was up in Columbus this week, doing a press conference on the Cup-Patterson formula, and just want to commend her on the time and the energy that's gone into this, and they've not given up, even though it was not put into the biennium budget, which was the original wish for, and that she had made some accommodations to some of the requests that came in, and have been very flexible in trying to move forward and address the different needs you've been hearing from across the state. Thank you for the time and energy. And you want to kick us off, Jenny, and talk about that a little further?
Sure.
I'm deferring my time on this to you.
I'm not going to.
So you've got my time, too.
I actually have a copy of the press release from yesterday, as well as, the front page is a list of the 66 cosponsors.
Wow.
So if you add Cup and Patterson to the 66, we're at 68 house reps who have cosponsored this House bill, and we have a number now, it's House Bill 305. So, that's pretty exciting, that it's in actual bill form now. It will be a standalone bill, we're hoping to have testimony and hearings on it as early as July. The goal is that it will be finished up by the end of December, and be ready to go for the second year of the biennium. So, that's the goal, and no, we've not lost hope, we continue to proceed, and, yeah, I'll keep working on it and keep you updated on the progress.
And I noticed that one of the changes that they'd made was to make it a six-year phase-in instead of a four-year phase-in?
That is correct.
Were there any other highlights that you wanted to address?
So, the price tag was a little too much for them to absorb in a four-year time span, so they're going to phase it in over six years. The other change was really related to poverty for urban districts, as well as the rural poor districts. So changing up the distribution method in, so that there was more money directed to those districts who have higher percentages of, of students in poverty. So we're hoping with those tweaks that we have fulfilled the, the needs that have been expressed to us, and we'll see, we'll see how it goes.
One of the media sentences that, that really hit me was, "While Governor Mike Dewine's proposal to expand wraparound services funding addresses, some of those, their plans aim at recognizing the full cost of educating students, Cup said it's still layered on top of an unworkable distribution formula." So it's, it appears that Governor Dewine's intent is positive, but it's still another patchwork piece, which has been the complaint about the school funding formula to begin with, and why your work began.
We're basically moving forward in the next biennium with no formula. It's, it's all, it's all flatlined, and we get the student wellness funds that the governor started out with, so there basically is no funding formula. So...
A little bit of concern on that?
Just a little.
Yeah.
I, I noticed that our local representative isn't on the list of the cosponsor. Do you think it would be an opportunity for our board, together collectively, to write a letter, just asking if it would be possible for him, with the amount of work that you've done at the local school districts? I know Monroe, as well, some other school districts are really advocating for this, to try to...
I don't think it would hurt, I think the other piece that we could point out, you know, I know Linda just handed this out about Butler Tech, but there are quite a few things in this plan that addresses, like, workforce development.
Sure.
And I know that Representative Lang is, is very concerned and interested about the business side of things.
Sure.
And so I think he, I think if he could see that connection, and how this plan also addresses that, hopefully that would help, but it would not hurt if he would reach out.
It would be, it would be great to see his name on the list, just with the amount of work that I know you've done, and how passionate the area school districts are with it.
Yeah, yeah.
How would we go about moving forward with that?
I can draft something, and we can discuss it, maybe as a legislative committee, we can start it out, and then pass something on, yeah.
Jenny, is there any, anything else as a board in a district that we can do to hold their feet to the fire, so to speak?
So, so we have talked about whether it would be advantageous for board resolutions in support of, I, I will tell you that I think contacting your own organization would be helpful as well. OSBA, if you contact them and encourage them to lobby for this, that would be helpful as well.
Well said.
Mm-hmm.
Matt, do you have anything?
The only thing I thought of, and I was giving my time to you, sorry, but I'm taking it back now, is that the state did approve the social-emotional learning standards, which was, which is good, so we're still unpacking those, and I'll get up to speed on that, we'll get up to speed on that soon, but just wanted to mention that.
And we had some Lakota educators on that committee, too.
Yeah, we did.
So it's nice to be able to have voice into those.
And it's still optional for districts.
Right, but most things that are on that list, we were doing anyway, so...
Right.
And we should be, quite honestly. That's all I had.
Kelly, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a question. Matt, do you know anything about, or Jenny, the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee amended and passed House Bill 123, which deals with having schools have to have some sort of outreach for suicide awareness? And they said in some cases, you can use some pre-existing clubs, so I wondered if Hope Squad would be able to be part of that, or if you've heard anything about that. It's just come out of committee, so I don't...
I haven't heard that yet, but I'm hoping that that would, Hope Squad would be a part of that list.
The only thing...
They are starting to spread to Columbus, too.
The only thing that concerns me is that it says that, that the amendment includes a provision to pre-existing clubs that have an adult advisor and are open to the student body, so I don't know, since it's...
Yeah, since they're peer-selected.
Right.
Yeah, I'll find out. You said House Bill 123?
123.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
It's not in place yet, you're just thinking ahead.
Right, it's just come out of committee.
Okay. In other news, Speaker Householder would like to see a moratorium, so they're not getting rid of the academic distress commissions, but he has called for a moratorium on it, which is at least slowing the process down, without others being created. Governor Dewine has appointed two state school board members from some resignations that happened on the board. There's not a lot happening educationally at this point, at the federal level, but we do have a couple of updates from Congressman Davidson. He continues to advocate for the U.S.-Mexico-Canada agreement. He supports a bipartisan bill called Generating American Income and Infrastructure Now Act, which would auction off USDA assets, and that would be directed toward federal infrastructure projects. He was appointed to the House Financial Services Committee, they oversee technologies like blockchain, which many local companies are beginning to invest in. And Butler Tech, he wrote a letter of support for Butler Tech Perkins grant application to support the Fifth Day Experience, which we've been talking about, which will start next February for students at Butler Tech. Do we have anything else for legislative?
No, one of the, but you did jar something, and I think early on in your report, you mentioned two new state school board members. One of those is Steve Dakin, who I would consider a mentor of mine, and so it's good for us to have another ally there. He's a, he was a phenomenal superintendent, works for Columbus State now, so...
He was actually considered, when Deborah Delisle stepped down as state superintendent, he, I think he was one of the finalists back in 2011.
Yeah, I think he pulled out, too.
He did?
Yeah.
Can't imagine why.
Hey, Matt, is there any movement on the, the bill about the, making us have to have a valedictorian and a salutatorian?
Not that I've heard, no.
Still?
No. But I do think Representative Lang was a co-signer of that, but I could be wrong. I'm not sure.
That's all we have legislatively.
All right, safety committee?
We had our exercise in drill. One of, one of the key cogs in that wheel is here, and, yeah, that's what the picture showed.
I don't know, the picture shows you look like a head.
The media showed that you were there. It was fascinating to see and to be a part of, and thanks to Chris Passage and his team for being one of the main organizers as well. We learned a lot, we, it was pretty tense there for a while, but 11 districts, Chris, I think were involved in that, within that scenario, but it went probably as well as it could have gone, I think, and made us really think and stretch ourselves, so I don't have anything else on the...
All right, thank you. All right, we have treasurer's recommendations. How would you like to break these out, Jenny?
I'm happy if they're all together, however you want to do it.
Do I have a motion for treasurer's recommendations, A through F, approval of board minutes, approval of the May financial reports, approval of the final certificate, estimated resources for fiscal '19, adopt the final appropriation resolution for fiscal year '19, approval of transfers and advances, and approval of temporary fiscal year 2020 appropriations. Motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay. So the board minutes are your typical things that you see on here, as well as the May 2019 financial reports. What looks different is the certificate of estimated resources. So that document sets up the total amount that we can spend for the year. So it takes our beginning cash and our estimated revenue, and basically sets up that guardrail for us. And then the final appropriations is our budget, our final budget for the year, which can't be more than the amended certificate. And then the transfers and advances that you see there are for our, our athletic fund, our, also, we had club cards at our high schools, and we started those at the junior high this year, so you're going to see transfers there, as well as the cleanup for our student fee accounts, which are 009 funds, and then tran- And then transferring when our one class graduates and they have money left in their student account, that transfers to the upcoming senior accounts. And temporary, our temporary budget for 2020, I know, which we have to have in place by July 1. Any questions?
Could you highlight changes from last year's?
So our temporary appropriations are going to match our five-year forecast for the general fund and all other funds are pretty similar to where we were this year. We did just get our allocations for our federal grants and those will change throughout the year. They look a little bit lower than what they did this year, but those will change and ebb and flow. So hopefully that helps. And we'll go into more detail when we do the permanent appropriations and the permanent appropriations have to be finalized before October 1. So in September, we'll have the final appropriations.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion for approval of superintendent's recommendations A through E? We have personnel items, contract with the Butler County ESC for a head start in preschool, field trips, and donations.
Someone?
I'll move, sorry. I was reading.
I'll second. Did you just?
No motion.
Oh, there was no motion, sorry.
Oh, there was no motion?
I was looking at the document.
Do I have a motion for super, a motion for approval? Thank you.
I thought Kelly moved, sorry.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Didn't Kelly move?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. I thought you said you were just reading. I'm sorry.
Like into my microphone, I even said it too. I was like, alright.
I apologize, I did not hear you. So I apologize, I didn't hear.
No problem.
Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Could we have discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion.
So Matt, thank you for, I noticed that we've got a status on there for the personnel items, which I'd requested at our last meeting. So if I'm reading that correctly, there are three new positions being added, new FTEs.
I will have to go back and pull that out.
Instructional aides for special education, I believe.
Correct. Sounds right.
And those are based on IEPs?
Yes.
All right.
And student numbers. But I think, I'm hoping you received a document earlier about all the staffing changes in the past couple of years, ups, downs, and the rationale.
A lot of change.
Yep.
But actually I agreed with what you decided to do. I think that was great. You were using internal leadership and moving people up for the most part.
Not just me, but yeah.
Yeah, well, I meant that in general.
I know.
The preschool contract we'd originally talked about, I thought that was coming back in-house and we've extended the contract.
So this is essentially the related services, not the teachers. And so we look to do that next year for the teaching staff, but it's just the related services right now and some of the leadership.
Can you do a high level, just the shifts in preschool for this upcoming year?
Mr. Kramer?
Sure.
Want to help me out with that?
Hi, Dr.
Thanks.
We have, this year we have.
Might want to come to the mic so it's taped.
You're coming to the mic. But we were, I mean, we have not, as these are getting settled, we have always said we were going to wait on the teachers until next year.
This was a transition.
Well, and I'm trying to understand our cost here too for what we were paying with everything included versus what we're still paying. It seems high to me.
Yeah. I can't speak to the actual dollars.
I can speak to that.
I can give you the overview. We did start looking at absorbing the preschool into our team and we got into November and decided that to look at the administrative and the related services and the teachers and the instructional aides was a lot for us to do at this time. So we have picked up the OTs, PTs, speech administrators, the two administrators that are involved, and those are now Lakota employees. And so what's in the preschool contract is 15, I don't have it in front of me, 15 teachers, instructional aides, and then a couple of other liaisons that support that work. Jenny would have the dollar differences from last year, but certainly we've picked up some of those in the Lakota cost, but they are out of the Butler County contract.
Correct. So last year, our contract was not to exceed 3.0, I'm rounding, 3.2 million and this year it's not to exceed 2.1 million. Now, just like Rob mentioned, we've shifted some of those costs in-house, but we're saving on those because we're not paying an administrative fee on those positions.
Which is 4%.
So, which is 4%. So we're saving the 4% for those positions that we've moved back in-house. And I can get you an exact dollar figure, but that's high level.
Is it still the goal for next year to then consider bringing the teachers in-house or are there bigger conversations to be had?
Our discussions have been, yes, we would like to do that, but we also have a lot of layers because they would join our LEA unions and our LSSA unions and so there would be a lot of MOU work that would need to get done because they work in a different calendar and a different schedule in the preschool. We started that work, but then we paused when we decided to just do the related services and the administrators.
As well as the licensing piece. There's steps that we would have to work through there, so.
I think ultimately that would be the end goal, but there's going to have to be a lot of work, a lot of work to do there.
Right. And the other thing to keep in mind, we'll renegotiate a contract another year out. So if that makes more sense to do it when we're renegotiating the LEA and the LSSA and include them in that, then that might make sense for the timing.
Okay.
So I'd asked previously to have some kind of understanding of the finances of bringing it in-house and what that looks like comparatively and are we spending more or savings of any sort? I'm not sure I have a clear picture of that yet.
I don't have the exact apples-to-apples comparison for tonight. I just did not get that prepared. My focus was on the other things. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So that's something I can pull together.
And we have the pieces in place. We have the people and so we know what that number looks like. I think the other thing to keep in mind is when we brought in the related services, we have opportunities for them to be used across more than preschool and so we're hoping to utilize those resources better because they're on our team and then we can flex them through multiple grade levels and multiple buildings.
I think that's a good point, Rob.
The 4% helps us too.
Right. But we have the people. We can do the math and show it.
So I know we need to get this approval done because we need to plan for the next school year, but I am still interested in seeing the finances on it.
Absolutely. Follow up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
And again, I think to follow up on some of those financial conversations we had last time on those FTEs, a lot of, there was some conversation about our increase in FTEs. A lot of those were driven by the all-day kindergarten as we did that over the last few years, not only when we did it for all of our students, but when we were doing tuition-based kindergarten. And so you did provide us that detail of the, we had reallocated some resources by being able to downsize in some areas, but then we did add some staff for all-day kindergarten as well as for providing specials in the elementary. So you did provide that data for us, which we appreciated.
Yeah, and it was nice to go back and reflect because it was going back a ways and so to go back and say, okay, what did we do? And because going back to 2012, 13, I don't remember everything. So we went back to our notes and it was nice to just kind of refresh our memory and to be able to validate, okay, here's what those adds were, so.
And the deletions, because there had been some reductions in several areas and it seemed like the additions had all been in the specials, special ed and the kindergarten areas.
And again, my point in bringing it up was that our salaries are the single biggest driver of our budget increases. And 120 people since '13 seemed like a high number, particularly with 44 staff added in one year. So thank you for the information. I still think it's something we need to keep in the forefront of our thinking.
And making sure we're continuing to follow up on those levy promises.
So any further discussion? Jenny, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
This brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. Anyone who'd like to address the board may do so at this time.
Could you name an address?
Yes.
David Korfman, 7568 Kirkwood Drive in West Chester. And I just wanted to share a couple light comments here with the board and the administration. I've been out talking to some people recently and I have no agenda to be up here tonight. Just wanted to share what you guys would appreciate. I know Joe Henson from the Chamber Alliance has said in the past, as Lakota goes, so do West Chester and Liberty Townships and I fully appreciate his opinion. He and Matt Miller shared how we want Lakota schools graduates to go get their education and then come back here and get a job. I got to talk to a couple of families where the kids had come back. One I just talked to that had gone to Alaska and came back and now is working over at the hospital. So I just wanted to share that. That is happening. People are going out, coming back. But one thing did strike me this afternoon, they must be living with their parents. I hope that doesn't last long. That's all I wanted to share, just a light moment here with my friends here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
Thank you. Yes, we're very thankful for the support of the chamber and Joe often does say that and we appreciate that and know that we also, without the businesses here to partner with us, we also couldn't be as successful as we are. So with our internship program and how all of our businesses have partnered with us, we're thankful for all the support that we get from our local community as well. So with that, we'll move to closing comments and we'll start with Brad.
Great. I don't have a lot to say other than, you know, it's been interesting this summer because in our household, it's the first summer that we're actually engaging in a lot of the summer activities that are offered throughout the community. And, you know, it's a new perspective on just how much our community supports our students after the last day of school. Just a shout out to the library. Our daughter has done, I think probably 10 different activities there from being an astronaut to doing kindergarten camp to doing everything that they offer and it's absolutely phenomenal. And it's one of those things where it's like, man, it's such a great secret that like, we have to tell everybody about it. But, you know, just to everything else, the arts groups that are out there, the camps and things like that. So just to our community, thank you. Learning doesn't stop on the last day of school, continues throughout the summer and it's because of our great community partnerships that we have that those things actually happen.
I have nothing.
Wow. I want to apologize first. I was orange-barreled tonight, thought I had all the detours figured out and there it was.
The Princeton Road one?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't know that either.
I didn't expect that one, so I apologize for being tardy. Actually, the start of summer, Brad, always makes me think about those things that I used to do with the boys and the opportunities for enrichment. So that's neat, you're getting that chance to do that. Other than that, I don't have anything else tonight except to say thanks Jenny for the continuing work at the State House.
I have nothing in further.
I've said enough.
I want to, we're not here to do it formally tonight, but I do want to give a shout out to Mr. Wesley, who's in the back of the room. The district picked up a District Partnership Program Award from ISTI earlier this week under his leadership with the programming for allowing our teachers to have sort of almost first access from any teachers across the country to the EST programs. And so that's under Todd's leadership, so kudos to you. I know you're going to say it's the team thing, but kudos to you for being the main driver for that and that got a lot of good push from people that were at the conference. So thank you for that. Mr. Korfman, to your point, thanks for some of the comments that you said, well, all of them, but in particular, had a really good lunch meeting today with Mr. Henson and a gentleman who I met for the first time, Mr. Bruce Shaber, who I think is pretty influential in the community as well and a lot of things to come in terms of Lakota and West Chester and Liberty Township, so thanks. That's all I got.
I was cleaning out some old papers and what came across a letter that one of the sixth graders from Union Elementary in Kelly Law's class had written us for Board Appreciation Month a couple of years ago. And it was before we had specials back and it was, they were making a case. They were different persuasive letters for different things, but this particular student had chosen specials. And they wrote, "So if you want students to be more focused, have different parts of their brain engaged, and learn skills that they can't in other classes, then give us specials every day." To end with, "Specials is every bit as important as normal school subjects." So I just thought like, how nice it was that we were able to deliver that for these sixth graders and all the other kids that were coming up. I guess not for that sixth grader because she had moved on, but it just made me thankful for the changes we've been able to make as I reflected back and looked at some of these different requests, kind of reading them now and all the great changes that we have been able to make in these past two years and how many of these requests we've been able to fulfill. And I just wanted to kind of reflect back and say thank you for your leadership and the team and all the work that's gone into that. And as we're reflecting on the financials, I'm so thankful that we've been able to invest wisely and make smart decisions on behalf of students to do good things and make a positive change. So with that, do I have a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jenny. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Level?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
And we will not be taking any voting action when we come out of executive session. Thank you.